I would like to call this meeting, you go Westland City Council. Order through the evening, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Present.
Councilwoman Hart?
Here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi?
Here.
Councilwoman Wishart?
Here.
Council President McDermott?
Here.
Or Ms. President?
Okay, normally in this portion of the agenda, we can start off with special announcements and presentations, but as you can see, looking at the sideboard, we're having a few technical difficulties here, our AP systems here, announcement paper are down. We are going to take a five-minute recess as a council while our IT Director Gray Brown works on this. The reason we want to get this back up is that so everybody in this audience can hear us and see what's on the monitors, but also so folks who are watching at home are able to hear what we're saying, because without microphone access, they won't be able to hear us. So we are going to take a five-minute recess and be back here at 7:07. Okay, we will now call this meeting of your Westland City Council back to order at 7:07 PM. Thank you for dealing with our technical difficulties here and working through it. So thank you for your patience on that. We will now begin tonight's meeting with special announcements and presentations with
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it always for your time, and I am here to talk about Relay for Life, of course. And our event was on June 8th. I mean, as much as we appreciated the time we had, we got rained, you know, the weather did not allow us to have our luminary ceremony, so, which is an important part of our event. So fortunately, we were able to book it for June 24th, and that's what I am here to talk a little bit about that. It will be at the Tanton Park at 1901 North Carlson, and you can arrive at 8:00 PM, and you can still purchase luminary bags. We will have them there. If you'd like to purchase them, you can get them online, get them from me, any of the team members, you know, if you'd still like to do a luminary bag, that's an honor and memory of any of your loved ones, friends, relatives, you know, coworkers. So we are just so thankful that we're able to have this so soon afterwards. Like I said, it's a very, if you've ever been to an event and saw the luminary, it is, it is pretty touching and special, so we didn't want to miss out on giving everybody that, that part of the relay. And I am so happy to say, I know it was announced at our relay that our goal was 50,000, and we surpassed that before our event started, so we're so happy about that. And also now, today when I checked, we were at actually 58, almost, almost at 59,000. So we're just so thankful for that, and counting. It doesn't close until September, so still, money's still coming in, so we appreciate that. So that's what I am here for, to say thank you again, City Council, City Council President, Pro Tem, Council members, Mayor, Fire Police, everybody, you guys have been great. We really appreciate our community standing behind us like this. So I want to say thank you again. Hope to see you on June 24th, 8:00 PM at Tanton Park. Thank you.
And how about a round of applause for Mary and the entire relay team? Okay, we will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your city council. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comments on the agenda. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
So.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Hart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
No.
Any changes to consent calendar? Yes, Councilwoman?
I would like to move Item A to the new business, that's our question.
There's a motion to move Item A to New Business Item 1. Is there support?
Support.
There is support. Okay. Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart?
Yes.
And President McDermott?
Yes. Okay, back to the consent calendar. Early utter changes to the consent calendar. Any other changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of study session held June 3rd, 2024. Traffic control order 2024-04, place three additional no-stopping, standing, parking, and loading or unloading of vehicles as prohibited signs on the west side of Carlson between Teresa and Cliff or Drive. Place five additional no-stopping, standing, parking, and loading or unloading of vehicles as prohibited signs on the east side of every other house easement on Carlson between Teresa and Cliff or Drive. Approval of pump station transfer switch installation project to Corby Energy Services, Inc., in order to operate the city's existing portable generators located off of Inkster, Middle Bell, and Newburgh Roads. Amount not to exceed $106,725. Approval of purchase of three replacement workstations for the Department of Innovation and Technology. Amount not to exceed $13,916.70. Introduction of budget amendments for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Wave procedure to allow the introduction and adoption of budget amendments for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Adoption of budget amendments for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Introduction of ordinance 248-A-115 and ordinance to amend ordinance 248 to show CB1 Low Intensity Commercial Business District where PU-D planned unit development is now shown in the area situated in the city of Westland, described as 1155 North Wayne Road, northwest corner of Wayne and Marquette. Rezoning was approved by city council May 20th, 2024. Adoption of prepared land division and combination resolution 5967 North Dowling, west side of Dowling, south of Stacy, Mary Beecher, this is planning department number 2267. Land division was approved by city council May 20, 2024. Approval of transfer of hazards boardups to the 2024 property taxes for the summer 2024 tax bill. Approval to extend the payment of 2024 summer taxes without additional penalty until Friday, August 30th, 2024. And the last item on the consent calendar, approval of permit-free garage sale weekend date July 12th, 2024 through July 14th, 2024. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from supporter? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
Unfinished business item number one, approval of contractor agreement for police station lobby enhancement project. Administration recommends Sole construction amount not to exceed $200,000, tabled by city council on May 6, 2024.
Is there a motion?
So.
Is there support?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No discussion.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
No discussion.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yeah, I just have questions to, I guess, finance. The fiscal budget year doesn't start till July 1st, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And from my understanding, we table this because the budget wasn't approved, and we're going through amendment now. I just don't feel comfortable approving this right now until we get everything situated. So I'd like to make a motion to table this until after we finish this process we've gone through with the amendment of the finances.
So you want to table this till the next meeting until we approve all the necessary budget amendments at tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table unfinished business. Now, you want to table or postpone? Because there's a difference. Postpone will allow us to put it back on, which I think is your intent, to postpone. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to postpone unfinished business item 1 until the next council meeting, correct, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
If I may?
You need support first.
Yes.
Support.
Okay. Councilwoman Baumann, supporting.
Thank you. If I may, since we are in the process of, you know, working through the past budget, and tonight's amendments don't really have anything to do with the upcoming fiscal year budget, I would feel more comfortable saying that I would be willing to support approval of the contractor agreement to commence after July, either July 1st or after the budget amendments being made post our study sessions that are coming up.
So you?
Would be more appropriate, because tonight's budget amendments don't have anything to do with the 2425 budget.
So you're making amendment to the motion to postpone that Councilwoman Hornbuckle put on the floor?
I suppose I am.
Councilman, she's making?
We're making this really difficult for Shannon.
So the amendment sounds like being?
My friendly amendment would be to postpone the approval of contractor agreement, dot, 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 until the study session and subsequent amendments made to the 2425 budget are made by council, which should commence no later than the first meeting of July, or the second one, I don't know, but.
So because you're saying, because the new budget goes into effect on July 1?
Right.
So then the first, which would be July 1, which is when the next meeting?
Which is July 1, right. And we were to, per the previous council meeting, said that we were going to sit down and evaluate the budget as a council and potentially make amendments. And so those amendments have not been made, and the budget is not in action. So to pass something that isn't in action, to Councilwoman Hornbuckle's point, you know, would, would be foolish.
Okay. Regarding this amendment, through the chair, to the administration, to Budget Director, can you speak to the upcoming budget that was just adopted at the last meeting that will go into effect July 1, and the impact that this has on that?
Council President?
Yes.
So she's making a friendly amendment to a motion that's already stood. The maker and supporter either have to accept the friendly motion, friendly amendment, or she's going to have to get support, but we don't have discussion yet.
Until we have that?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I would have to?
You have to accept her friendly amendment.
Okay. Yeah, I would accept that support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Director Block, if you could?
Through the chair, so this, for the police station lobby enhancements, this item is included in the, it was the amended capital improvement plan that was approved last meeting, and is included in the capital improvement fund that was adopted as well, that will start on July 1. So as long as it doesn't, like, no work, the hammer doesn't hit the ground until July 1, then it would be in compliance with the budget that was adopted last meeting.
Will we have?
Yes. Perton, yeah.
So I think what the heartburn is, and I guess through the administration, to the budget team, is that we have not had our amendments. We got promised from the administration that we would have a meeting or something shared to us, and that hasn't happened yet. So I think a few people on the council might be a little nervous with this approach. So with that being said, I think moving this or postponing this just until the new budget comes into place, that's, it sounds like my colleagues are kind of on that same path of, of using that as, as our guide for approval. So I don't know if my colleagues feel the same way, but it looks like that's what the motion is here on the table, Council President.
Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the, the allocation, wherever it may go, be it police, be it computers, be it carpet, to me, you know, obviously, I support our police department, I would like them to be safe, and that, that's not at all what my goal would be here. My problem lies in the fact that there was supposed to be a study session to talk about amendments that could be made, and I don't, you know, most likely, this would not be something that's impacted, and that would be my hope. But until that document is truly finished, I don't think we should really be venturing into making expenditures out of that budget.
Thank you. Is there any, yes, Councilwoman? And this is on the motion?
This is on?
Yes. This is, this is on the amendment?
Friendly.
To, with the friendly amendment attached, to postpone it?
Not on this?
Not just the amendments, on, yes, the friendly amendment?
Can I try asking a question?
Yes.
Can we try asking another one? The question is, because I thought I heard my colleague say something about the start of the contract itself. So are we postponing the start of the contract? I know we're postponing this item to after we've approved, after we've gone through our amendments, and I agree with that. I'm just curious if there's anything?
It sounds like no work would be done until we adopt this. So any work that they're looking to potentially do around this project would not be done until it's approved by the council. So that would be correct. Is that it? Okay. Is there any additional discussion on the friendly amendment that has been made? Chief, did you have something you want to add?
Just, so Sole did our whole front renovation, we've had a good relationship with them the past year and a half. I think what they're really looking for, and understand the budget piece to it, would be if they adopt just an agreement so we can kind of shake hands that they're going to be the contractor for this, and then they wouldn't have any expense until the council approves it. That way, if it does get denied, we can walk away from it. But I think that's more to get the ball rolling, so to speak, with an agreement, as opposed to actually expending any, or receiving any invoices or any work done.
I think the concern, through the chair to the chief, I'm the chair, but, force it happens, so. Through me. The concern is that there will be an expenditure sent out based on passing this with the contractor. So I think that's a concern that?
I may?
Councilwoman? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you. I know that we have some contractors that we have a relationship with and we've worked with in the past. The other side of this would be, I don't recall, and it may just be me not recalling every item that we pass on a regular basis, so forgive me, but I don't remember seeing an RFP, and I don't remember even awarding this contract to anyone either. So if I could have clarity, please, through the chair to, I guess, Finance, or someone in the administration as to how this contract was even began to be awarded, that would help me as well.
Director Block?
Through the chair, in the background information on the agenda item, it was mentioned that Sole Construction has an active facility contractor agreement with the city for as needed building repairs, and that's what this is based on.
And that, there wasn't a dollar amount attached to that agreement?
Through the chair, was there a dollar amount attached to that agreement with Sole?
I'm not sure of that. I just looked that up and went back to you.
Okay. Hold on, Hart's got a question. Councilwoman Hart?
Thank you. I think I'm just trying to bring clarity to everybody, to my colleagues and everybody in the room. I, I, I know you're not confused. I think the intent here from my colleagues is that, I think we've all voiced some support for it. I think the concern is, we don't want to book this expenditure until the amendments that we have put forward to the administration for them to adjust the $318,000 revenue shortfall across the other departments, has been presented to council, and the council has approved that. That's my understanding. So, I mean, there's a lot of different conversations, so I'm just trying to bring some clarity to that. And I don't have a problem with that. I don't think this is going to be at risk, but I recognize my colleagues' position on that, and I would support that while, I wouldn't put a date to it, because I think that gets a little muddy. I think we just postpone following the budget amendments that a council will eventually approve. I mean, that's what I think the intent is here. I just think they got a little, little muddy. So, I mean, if that's, that's what the intent is, I would offer that as a friendly amendment to the amendment, so it has clarity, you know, so. Because if we put a date to it and we don't have that amendment, then it's back on the agenda again, July 1, and we're going through this thing again. If we just, you know, following the adoption of the amended budget, I think that it's just going to bring some clarity and some, and some sense to what we're trying to accomplish here. Thank you, Council President.
Council?
Call the question.
Okay. Is it called a question?
Can we have it clarified, what we're voting on right now?
What's being voted on now is a friendly amendment made to the original amendment by Councilwoman Hornbuckle to postpone this item, unfinished business number 1, until the next meeting of city council, which would be the July 1 meeting.
Technically, Council President, what you're voting on right now is to call the question.
To call the, you're right. Call the question.
Yep.
We're going to call the question, and then I will discuss that. Sorry. There's been a call to question. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart?
No.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi?
No.
Councilwoman Wishart?
No.
President McDermott?
No. Okay. The call to question has failed, so we are still debating the friendly amendment to the amendment on this item. I saw that you had had your light on, and did you have a question?
No, I, I, I think my question was, if the amendment, perhaps, like, if we do not agree July 1, that's, July 1 is essentially the start of the new budget year.
Yes.
So I don't feel comfortable putting a date on this, although obviously, I support the police department and support the lobby enhancement. I don't know if we need a date.
Make a friendly amendment?
I would like to make a friendly amendment, if I may, thank you, to have it when the budget is approved.
As long as the maker and supporter agree to that, then that's good.
That's, I don't know if you guys?
No, and that's just to not put July 1?
Correct.
That's just say, hey, once we get all the financed stuff?
It's removing the date.
Yes. Yes. So it would not be saying July, I don't want to attach a date to it, July 1, I would, I would say when the budget is, amendments and all are in place. That's what I would wish to make the adjustment to.
Yeah, I would accept that.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
I've never heard of friendly amendments, so I want to just kind of clarify that if it, are we, is our maker going to actually modify the motion to say that we move this, we're moving this item, exactly clarification, so that it's clean, so that the motion is clean?
Yes, this item, Councilwoman, has been accepted as a friendly amendment. The new amendment with the friendly amendment attached to it is now that we are postponing unfinished business item 1 until which time the budget amendment is fully approved.
I think that's clarified.
Yes. And so that is the issue at hand. Is there any additional discussion on the motion as the amendment?
I will.
The friendly, okay. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Just for, ready? I just want to get this right. Okay, so postpone, right?
To postpone unfinished?
Until the budget amendments are fully approved.
Yes, so we dropped the date off, so there's not the July 1 date, that is out.
Okay. All right, just give me one minute, please. Okay. Get another sheet. All right. Ready for roll call?
Yes.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hart?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wishart?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we move to new business, item 1A, approval of minutes of regular meeting held June 3, 2024.
Is there a motion?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. So any discussion from the maker?
Not yet.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilwoman.
My, my question, my concern with the minutes, and I have a question, is that when we were here at the last meeting, we had made some, I had made a motion to amend the resolution and then I withdrew it based on the understanding that certain things would get changed in the actual resolution. However, I'm not seeing those changes and unfortunately, we're, we have questions of our clerk who's not here, and specifically, there are one specific area.
Can you state what, what resolution you're talking about?
Sorry, the red resolution for the budget. Resolution for the budget, sorry, yes. The resolution for the budget was the one I was talking about. I had made a motion, if you look at the minutes, I had made a motion, Councilwoman Rakowski supported it, and then I withdrew the motion with the anticipation that certain things would get reflected due to the fact that we were passing a one-year budget and we were not, we were not approving an estimated budget, but we did discuss it about it. Specifically, I will talk about one specific area in the resolution where it says, whereas a public hearing on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2025, estimating budgets for 2026 and 2027 was held May 6th, however, the agenda for that meeting did not indicate to the public that they were going to be talking about the estimated budget. It only reflected that there was a proposed budget for fiscal year. So I just threw the chair to whomever, possibly the attorney, our attorney, when we're, when we're talking about historical documents, actual records of things that are going on, how accurate do they need to be if what I understood to happen did not?
So I'm not exactly clear on what the question is, but to the extent that there was a motion that was withdrawn, then the changes that would have been affected by that motion would typically not go into effect because there wasn't a motion that was supported and that voted on. Now, to the extent that, because we're talking about the minutes here, to the extent that there's an inaccuracy in the minutes, this is the place where the council would correct those inaccuracies, again, by motion, support, and then a vote on correcting whatever the issue is in the minutes.
Attorney Grisco, if I may, it does say in the document that it is estimated budgets for '26 and '27. That is the language that was changed last week by the clerks because originally the language read adopting the budget for '24, '25, '25, '26, '26, '27, without the language of estimated budgets in there. That language was then added and that is what is reflected in the minutes tonight.
So the change was made then, is that what you're saying?
There is a reflection in the minutes that the word estimated is in there.
Okay.
Councilwoman?
So you're saying the change was the word estimate?
It does say estimated budgets for '26 and '27.
I would like to make a change to that one whereas statement so that it is accurate to the agenda. Sorry.
We can't go back into historical documents and change them.
Okay.
That's been voted on and approved and ratified.
That is what my question was too.
Because the language was, when we talked about it last week and voted to accept it, the language estimated was added in.
Based on, correct me that, but it's all based on correcting it.
If I may, Councilwoman?
Yes.
I think what the, the challenge, Councilwoman Baumann, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, is that what she sees in the minutes versus what was executed are different. So while the language may appear in the minutes as estimated, she feels that the document that was executed does not reflect that. I'm trying to understand you.
So most specifically?
Yeah.
Is the fact that there was a public hearing for a proposed budget for 2025? And this says a public hearing was held for, for a budget for fiscal year and estimated budget, but that was not in the minute, that was not in the, the agenda to public. So even just that statement alone, so there were some corrections that were, yes, we withdrew based on corrections in the minutes. And that, that one's a big one. It, it, that one probably stands out more to me, even than the estimate, because I know we kind of had some conversation about that last time.
And the estimated is the language that the clerk added in.
Right, but I, I, when you have an agenda to the public, of, for a public, when you call a public hearing, hell, yeah, when you call a public hearing on an agenda, doesn't that have to be reflected properly? If they didn't think that they were coming in and talking about an estimated budget?
It wasn't a public, yeah, it wasn't a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, it was. On May 6th, whereas a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year.
And we're on June 17th.
Right. Those meetings from May 6th have already been previously approved.
Yeah.
We can't amend previous minutes.
It was a resolution that was supposed to be corrected because it's not accurate.
That resolution couldn't be corrected because those minutes were passed.
Right. The one that was corrected was from last week, adding the word estimated in there. That's what the clerk, that's what the clerk's office had updated and corrected.
I actually believe.
When we talked about it at the last meeting, the consternation seemed to be that the word estimated wasn't in there and that there was the belief that the budget being voted on was all three fiscal years, when it is really we're voting and adopting the one-year '24, '25 fiscal year budget with estimated years '25, '26, and '26, '27 in the budget. And that was the correction that the clerk's office made, adding that word estimated in. Pro Tem?
So, Council President, looking at the resolution that is provided in the packet, it does look like it does say that here, Councilwoman. So resolve, City Council adopts the revised budget, fiscal years 2025 and estimated budgets 2026 and 2027 as stated above, and then adopts revised budget revenues. So it looks like we adopted the both for estimated budgets. So I'm confused what we're looking at.
It's the public hearing you're talking about from May 6th, but we can't amend those minutes.
We can't amend a public hearing.
I'm not, I'm not going to do those minutes. But those minutes from that meeting say, a public hearing was held for the proposed '24, '25 budget. Motion by Hart, supported by Hornbuckle, to close the public hearing for the proposed '24, '25 budget. It does not say anything about the estimated budget for a public hearing. I'm talking about community. Clear, all agree, pass board.
For next year, we can make that note, but we can't go back and amend that particular language because that's a minutes that we've already voted on and approved and it's historically in the record.
That's why I pulled my, that's why I withdrew it because you were correct.
Council President? Call for orders of the day. The item is the approval of minutes for June 3rd. Please keep on, on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, your light was on.
I withdraw.
Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Great. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item number two, nomination of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term, term to expire June 21, 2027. Daniel Murphy has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Council President, we should nominate Daniel Murphy?
There's a nomination for Daniel Murphy?
Support or?
Doesn't need support, not for the nomination.
Close nominations.
There's a motion to close nominations?
Support.
Motion to close nominations by Councilman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
No, thank you.
Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item number three, appointment of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term, term to expire June 21, 2027. Daniel Murphy has been nominated.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampe. Is there any discussion from the maker?
None.
And is there any discussion from supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Mr. Murphy? Well, congratulations to Mr. Murphy anyway, on being reappointed to the zoning board of appeals. Nope, does not look like it.
New business, item number four, confirmation of reappointment of Carrie Beebe as alternate to the Westland Board of Review for a three-year term effective upon council confirmation and to expire June 7, 2027.
Is there a motion?
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion with the maker? Oh, administration, here?
No.
Okay. Any discussion from the supporter? Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item number five, approval of application from KP Enterprises LLC located at 31525 Joy Road to transfer ownership of a 2023 Class C liquor license with Sunday sales permit from Benny's Restaurant, Inc., cancel existing dance permit, new Sunday, Sunday sales permit and entertainment permit.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion from Pro Tem Sampe, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there, did you have discussion, Pro Tem?
Do we have presentation?
Is there a presentation on this?
No.
Okay, I think there was. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes.
Is there anyone that can clarify what exactly is happening with that? I mean, I, we were trying to find KP Enterprises and I just want some clarification on what is exactly going on, you know, what's, what's a dance permit, so just a little help here.
I can take a couple of questions on that. So anytime you have an ownership transfer of a liquor license, the, any local requirements have to be complied with and things of that nature? So part of Westland's ordinance requires, in this instance, just an ownership change from the previous owner to the, to the new owners, KP Restaurant Enterprises LLC. And they're actually dropping the existing dance permit, which I don't necessarily think was ever in use to begin with. And they do have a stage there for entertainment, music and things of that nature, so they're, they're looking apparently to utilize the entertainment permit and otherwise just transfer the ownership of the existing license to the new licensee.
Okay. Great. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion carries.
New business, item number six, approval of proposed land division, 35259 Katy, north of Palmer, east of Wayne Road, Ba, Bashar Albana. This is planning division number 2268. Planning Commission recommends approval and if approved directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Oh?
Yes, thanks, Council.
Is there a motion? Sorry.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Rakowski.
Okay, thanks, Council President. Good evening, City Council. The subject property here is zoned R5 single-family residential outlined in yellow on your screen. It's currently developed by a single-family dwelling there just to the right-hand side of that red line down the middle. Petitioners seeking approval to split the property into two parcels, again, that red line indicating the split line. The purpose is to build a new home on the resulting vacant parcel to the west. The existing parcel is 208 feet of frontage along Katy Street, approximately 49,000 square feet. Parcel A and Parcel B will be 104 feet each, well beyond the required minimum frontage along the street and about 24,000 square feet each, again, well in excess of the minimum lots size for an R5 zoned parcel. The resulting parcel that has the home on it will continue to meet all of the setback requirements with the proposed split. Let's see what else I have. I have the survey up on the screen showing the original parcel. You can see the 208 here at the top. And this is the proposed split with the hash line going down the middle showing the 104 at the top and the setbacks for the garage. The garage is close to that three-foot minimum, but again, it's, it's 3.02, so it's in compliance there. The administration and planning commission are recommending approval. The property owners are out of town, so they're being represented by a gentleman sitting in the corner over there. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mo, for your help. I'm here on behalf of the Albana Group. Like he just described, it's just a very simple split. There's already a house on there that actually we're going to be putting up for sale in a few weeks and then just developing the, the other parcel just to put a single-family home. Obviously, we'll submit our plans to the building department, meet all setbacks, and that's really about it, council.
Any questions from the maker? Anything, supporter?
No.
Is there any additional questions from the council? All right, any dissent? Any dissent? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
New business, item number seven, approval of site plan for proposed single-family home development, parcel number 028990026000 and 028990027000, west side of Newburgh, north of Ford Road, Najim Saima. This is planning division number 0503D.
Zuma, sorry.
Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and with the conditions stated in the planning department cover memo.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
It's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Mo?
Thanks, Council President. There's two subject properties here. They're both located on the west side of Newburgh Road, just north of Ford Road. The two properties comprise of about 2.5 acres and are vacant wooded lots. The petitioner proposes to develop six single-family dwellings utilizing the R5 district requirements. Properties to the north, south, west are zoned R1 single-family residential and developed by single-family dwellings. Properties to the east, this is across the street from, this is across the road, Newburgh Road, are zoned townhouse residential developed by Sheltering Pines condominium complex. So essentially, the petitioner is, will combine these lots and create six single-family lots that will meet the setback requirements along with the minimum lot width, the lot area requirements, which the lot width is 60 feet, depth is 100 feet, and the minimum is 7,200 square feet. This is the site plan of what the lots will look like, along with a cul-de-sac road that will eventually be dedicated to the city. Once the development is completed and engineering signs off on the road, it will come to you for approval of that dedication. The development will have access from Newburgh Road via that road that I just mentioned. The development will contain concrete sidewalks and street trees along every parcel frontage being created. A common area exists at the southwest corner over here where my cursor is. The homes will be colonials, similar to the rendering on your screen. They'll range from about 2,300 square feet up to approximately 2,700 square feet, featuring three to four bedrooms depending on the type that, that is constructed. All of them will feature a two-car garage. The renderings and floor plans of all the home types or all the home options, I believe there's four of them, are in your backup. All of the homes will be constructed using brick and limestone materials. The applicant must also obtain a permit for stormwater discharge from Wayne County. The administration and planning commission are recommending approval of this, subject to the conditions that the streetlights be installed per DTE standards. This is a requirement to take ownership of the roads, the city, and a good faith effort, this is a condition made by the planning commission, a good faith effort be made to save as many of the trees as possible around the exterior perimeter of the property. around the exterior perimeter of the property, essentially being the backyards of the six lots. That's all I have. The petitioner is here as well. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Would the petitioner like to come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we open up the council for questions?
I, I do not. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great. Any questions from the maker?
I do.
It's Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for presenting. Looks really good. For the property that you're building, what will the price range be for these homes? They look really gorgeous.
They, obviously, the market will dictate, you know, the, the pricing, but we think that they're going to be in the 400 range.
And I think this to Mo, there was a couple of concerns from the planning commission about the stormwater. Did we get with Wayne County and get to sign up on that yet?
The developer could speak a little bit more after I say my comment, but the site plan essentially is designed to control the stormwater on site. We require that developers do that before they proceed and develop construction documents, but the construction document phase is essentially when the developers submit to Wayne County their engineering documents along with their engineering permit applications to Wayne County. There's a lot of risk in developing those plans financially for developers if, if things go sour here. But this development does have the engineering documents included in your backup. The city believes it's sized appropriately and will ultimately be Wayne County's to approve, deny, or ask for modifications.
So just so I understand that the Wayne County approval will happen after this approval?
Wayne County approval along with building permits from the city approval, along with city engineering approval, happens after the site, site plan is approved, yes.
And the other concern was about the traffic in that area. How far is that away from Myers and Lowe's? Because I know coming out of Myers is really hard. Coming out of Myers aren't ready enough. And then something, something else is going to cause a little problem.
Yes, the planning commission did express concern for traffic. As I explained to the planning commission, this is probably the lowest intensity use you'll see from a traffic perspective. It's a single-family development with six homes. The planning commission does have the authority to require a traffic study for high-intensity uses or problem uses such as gas stations or drive-through restaurants. We sent this to the Traffic Bureau at the police station along with OHM, our engineering consultant. They reported no concern for the generated traffic that the subdivision will generate. That comment or email was passed on to the planning commission, and I, I strongly believe that there will be no issues with the trips generated by the subdivision. To answer your question, it's several hundred feet from the intersection at Ford Road and Newburgh, and again, several hundred feet to the north from Myers' first exit and entrance driveway.
I just want to make it known that, you know, the traffic there might be a little concerned for residents, so making sure we keep that in mind as well. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Pro Tem?
Well, thank you. These homes are gorgeous. I had a question, though. Are these considered detached condos? Or are these considered independent housing?
I think they are considered. It depends on the development that you seek. I believe they are considered detached condos, yes.
Okay, because they're quite close. So I was curious about that. And then, based on approval, what is your timeline for beginning the process? And when would we see these homes actually built?
The, the preliminary plan right now is to start with clearing the site.
Okay.
Complete the architectural and engineering drawings, and obviously, seek permits. Then after that, I would, I would see that either late fall or early spring when we start the actual onsite activities. As you well know, we start with utilities first, and that's what, that's what we will do. We wanted to start earlier with clearing the site, but I understand that we cannot do any of that until the approval is granted.
Yeah.
So if this project was to be approved tonight, so then we would start the clearing of the site immediately for one main reason. We have a power line that crosses the property, north to south, and DTE will not do anything on that until we clear, until we clear the site. And also, DTE will not, as Mohammed mentioned, regarding the streetlights and so on, they say, well, okay, clear your site, give us these plans, and then we'll talk to you because they have to present a proposal for doing that work. So we would like to do that ahead of, you know, we have to do this first anyhow.
Okay, so that's fair enough. So it looks like you have to obtain, you know, your proper permits, start the clearing process. So to answer my question, are you thinking that it's probably going to be a 2025 completion then?
Most likely.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. Hey, thanks for coming out. No, I, I love the site plan. I'm not concerned about traffic. I don't think it's going to be a problem. And they, the homes actually are very contemporary, very contemporary design and styling. I think it's going to be very attractive. I'm excited to see it. I just had a question. You kind of answered it, but I just want to kind of put you on the record a little bit.
Sure.
I, in your renderings, I see it. But I didn't see the drawings, but it could be my eyes. So I'm just going to get it from the horse's mouth. Are you putting in streets, uh, street lighting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thought you said it, but I just kind of wanted to pin you down real quick. The reason I ask is we've had a couple of other folks in the past that had streetlights on the rendering, and then when they were done, the streetlights weren't there. So we just want to make sure. I mean, they're here in the renderings, I see them. And I didn't see them in the drawings, but I said it was my eyes, but I figured I'd ask the question anyway.
Mohammed brought this up early on.
I'm not surprised.
And as I mentioned maybe a few minutes ago, that DTE needs us to, to clear the site so that we can, they start talking to us.
As long as we get streetlights. I'm pretty good with everything else. It looks really good. I'll be in support. Thank you, Council President.
I promise that will happen.
You're welcome. Is there any? Yes, Councilwoman?
I have a clarification. I'm not sure if it's the chair to, or someone else, but the approval for site plans for proposed single-family homes, and I just heard that they're condos. I, detached condos, I understand that, but my understanding is that they, you know, my, my understanding is that they're very different based on ownership. Because I hear, you know, it's $400,000 range, perhaps, but, and there's an appreciation that's different in condos versus homes. So I just, I just want a clarification. Does anyone has any, any words on that? Just for...
It's not true. I love that detached condos, but they're single-family homes. It's a classification, detached condos. It just allows it to be classified different, but it doesn't affect pricing or whatnot. It's the distance in between your home. So that's the distance.
It's also one which, which condos don't own all.
Yes, we don't own the whole. But it's a house, yes.
It is the government's.
It is, yes, correct.
All set, Councilwoman? Okay. Any additional questions from the council? Any additional questions? Okay. Any dissent? Any dissent? All right, hearing and seeing none, motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, item number eight, approval of special land use and site plan modification for proposed marijuana collocated facility located at 37800 Cherry Hill, west of Newburgh, on the north side of Cherry Hill, Quality Roots, Inc. This is planning division number 1933B. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and with the conditions stated in the planning department cover memo.
Is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion. Is there support? I will support it. Is there any discussion from the maker? Great. Mo, do you have?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The applicant is seeking to modify the previously approved site plan and special land use for the construction of a marijuana co-located facility. At the time, it included retail cultivation slash growing and processing operations. The modification being proposed today is to remove the cultivation operation, which results in a smaller building footprint. The removal of the growing operation will result in the operation or the business only being primarily for retail with a processing element, still satisfying the co-located definition in the city's ordinance. The previously approved building on your screen was approximately 49,000 square feet. The new building being proposed as part of the modification tonight is approximately 6,400 square feet. This is a 6.65-acre site located on the north side of Cherry Hill, just west of Newburgh, tucked between the railroad there on your screen, left-hand side. And the property is zoned I1 light industrial, currently vacant. Properties all around it, north, south, east, west, I'm sorry, that's not true. North, south, and east are all zoned industrial with some sort of industrial operations to the east. You actually have another conditionally-approved marijuana co-located business next to Hush Entertainment. And then properties to the west, actually west of the railroad, these are all zoned R5, single-family residential, some of them which are developed by single-family detached dwellings. The 2018 master plan, future land use designation for the site is industrial. The site will continue to be accessed by a one-full-service driveway similar to the previously-approved site plan at Cherry Hill. The site continues to comply with the parking requirement for both the marijuana retail business and the processing operation. Proposed landscaping for the parking areas, open space in the frontage along Cherry Hill complies with the zoning ordinance requirements and is, again, very similar to the previously-approved site plan. The building will be constructed using modern material, including stone veneer, metal paneling, wood siding, and frame, and frosted glass paneling, panels. The proposed building complies with all the bulk requirements in the zoning ordinance under the industrial district. This includes the height, lot coverage, all the setbacks. Similar to all of the developments that come before you, stormwater will need to be approved by Wayne County. This site plan includes a stormwater detention basin on the north side of the site, northwest side of the site right here. Site lighting also complies with the zoning ordinance. There's a photometric in your backup showing that the site does not exceed one-foot candle at the property line. The Administration and Planning Commission recommend approval with a variety of conditions. I'm going to read them on the record. Number one, a security plan that complies with the marijuana business ordinance must be adhered to and submitted to the planning department and police department. This was already done previously as part of their original approval. Number two, the marijuana business licensee continue to abide by the Legally Executed and Binding Community Benefits Agreement, signed and dated June 30 of 2022. Continued compliance with all local and state laws pertaining to marijuana business. Number four, all signage and advertising must comply with the city's marijuana business ordinance. And finally, number five, hours of operation per our marijuana business ordinance be restricted, but be, be limited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. I know Eric, the representative and authorized agent, is in the room. Happy to answer any questions myself as well. Thank you.
Would the petitioner like to come forward? Thank you.
How you doing? Eric Carr, CEO of Quality Roots. I know there's a lot of new faces here and a lot of people who've been here for a long time. I know this has been a long road. And as I keep saying, we're, you know, hopefully given the opportunity here to just get this done. This will be our ninth retail facility in the state. This will look just like, you know, each and every one of them. Our community benefits will be followed through on. And, you know, we're just ready to get to work. The last thing I'll state is, because I do know that there has been some discussions, you know, largely on the reduction of the site plan specifically to the building size. You know, of course, that comes with the industry changing and so on and so forth, but at the end of the day, you know, we are the property owners. You know, if there's ever an opportunity to maximize, you know, the use of this property in the future, that's something we'll look at. But today, we're asking for the approval on the retail side. And then at the planning commission meeting, we did, you know, get to meet some, some neighboring residents. I don't know if some are here today. And they were happy with the reduction of the building size so they could keep a little bit of their, of their nature preserved around them. So we're excited to just hopefully move the, move the project forward and get this done and move on. Thank you.
You have any questions, the maker?
No questions really, just a comment. This has been a long time coming, and I'd really like to see this move forward and get some real movement in that area and in our city with this project. So I will ask for support in getting this moved, moved on.
I have something, but I'll get to my colleague first.
Thank you, Council President. So as we all know, this is, this has been going on for quite some time. I don't think, help me, any of my colleagues were on the marijuana selection at that process with me, so that's how long ago that was. When we put this together, we spent better part of a year going through all of the, meeting with the industry, understanding what the needs and desires were, how it fits in the landscape of the city. We had a lot of public involvement, eight study sessions, and then subsequently passed the ordinance. And then we went out and allowed the industry to bid. We had roughly four retail locations that we put out. And they went out, and competitive bids were put in, and these bid packages went from everything with a, with a very, with a very detailed, very objective metric and rubric. Development size, development cost, the land, if it was needed to be developed a little bit better, if there was some, you know, soils and everything else had to improve the property. So that process took some time, and then it went through the Marijuana Review Board and finally came to council with recommendations. And the people that were chosen gave the best opportunity for this community in terms of those requirements that were met. This being one of them. They put forward a package that was this. And then subsequently, extensions were asked from the council. We approved it the first time. Came back and asked for another extension. This council approved it the second time, with stern words from the rest of my colleagues on the council that this is your last bite at the apple. Make sure that you do what you said you were going to do. They didn't. They asked for a third extension. This council did not award that. Which then, they found legislative, excuse me, a litigious relief from us as best they can. And then have continued to try and push for this much, much smaller. With, with regards to Quality Roots, the submitter here, the development is 13% of what they originally proposed. 13% of what this council sat down and looked at and was able to award the people that were picked. Now, if this was a simple thing like, hey, it didn't work out, we want a smaller thing, that's one. However, this was a highly competitive process. There were a few winners and quite a lot of losers. And if the losers, I would be upset if I come to find out that I lost to somebody who are then allowed to bait and switch what they promised, the residents of the city of Westland and the city council. So my position will be, has been, and will continue to be, do what you said you're going to do, and I won't have problems. Do it not, then I don't think it's fair to everybody else in this very competitive landscape who weren't awarded. I will not be in support of this on fundamental reasons, that it is not right in my mind to be ethically, ethical, fair, or just for all the people that applied and were not selected. And all of the time that was spent by council, the community, the administration, to put forward a validated, objective metric system and final selection process. So I will not be in support. And it'll be pretty hard to move me off that when you look at it from that perspective. I recognize and respect the Planning Commission's position, and on the building itself, I agree. On the building itself, it's perfect. But I have a much higher problem with it, again, because of the competitive landscape and being able to bait and switch at the last minute. And I'm sorry, my sympathy ran out, sixth September, 2022. So I have none for you. There would have been better ways for us to handle this and a more ethical approach. If the industry did change, we could have put it back out in the street. But then, that was made sure that that was not able for us to do. So this is a situation not of our creation, but the industry's creation. And now we're sitting here dealing with it and asking for them to forgive us and trust them moving forward. I have some trust issues as well. Thank you, Council President.
Welcome. Any additional discussion from the council? Councilwoman?
I appreciate my councilmember's comments because he does have the history of this. He does, he bears something that many of us don't have, which is of all this very valid knowledge. I'm actually going to support him in not supporting this because I appreciate what he says, and I think in any, and I have seen it happen where someone has come forward and then not be able to do something because the industry changed. And that's not the council's responsibility to make sure that we're, you know, we can't change the industry, we can't, of any industry, doesn't matter what it is. And it's, you know, people do come forward and say, well, I can't do what I said I was going to do, and they either have to do what they said they were going to do or not. So I just want to share that.
Thank you. Pro temp.
Thank you. You know, I was in at the tail end of, I guess, the extensions, and, you know, it's just really disappointing that we had to go through that. It's money loss of the community, so as my colleague said, it's thirteen percent of what was originally planned, which is really disappointing. I mean, I would like to support this, but I just can't. I mean, ethically, it's just, it's not right. It's not fair to our citizens. So I'm sorry, but my patience ran out too. And I support you, Councilman Hart, in what you said, and it's really disappointing. You know, I really would love to see what was full capacity of what was planned, and I think that's what the citizens deserve. So I'm sorry, but I won't be supporting it tonight.
Can I say anything else?
So I understand the frustration that folks have, that changes were made, promises were made, they weren't kept. I will be in support of this. We talked about the need for revenue in the community. This produces revenue for our taxpayers. It gives us additional revenue within our taxpayer budget. And while I share the frustration that, you know, as petitioners, you guys came on multiple occasions asking for extension after extension and didn't deliver that, it is frustrating. But there's still a reality that, correct me if I'm wrong, whether it's your, as a petitioner, or any other petitioner out there, grow operations are just not being built across the state of Michigan and across the country due to oversaturation in the market of marijuana, a glut of product, and a crash in price per pound, basically, of cannabis and marijuana products. And so I'm going to be in support of this. I think we have an opportunity to move forward and put this behind us. I think we can share and express our disdain, our disappointment with what's going on throughout the process, but still recognize that we have an avenue and an opportunity to move forward on this process and bring in some, I think, much-needed revenue to our community and some development here at this site. So I will be in support of this. Senator, do you have something?
I just wanted to be recognized before the vote. So the way that the packet is structured on this item, I don't know if everybody, hopefully had the opportunity to go through all that, is that there's actually two resolutions proposed for this, so one would be an approving and one would be a denying. And of course, the council's not required to use either one of those, but it sets forth some potential reasoning that the council might have, and so it just encourages the council to set forth its reasoning for whatever action it chooses to take, whether an approval or denial, and that there's those two resolutions in the packet for the council's use.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? I'm guessing someone's going to say roll call.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
No.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Radkowski.
No.
Pro temp Sampe.
No.
Councilman Wishart.
No.
Council President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion fails. New business item number nine, approval of license amendment and adoption of corresponding resolution approving co-located amen, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, resolution approving amendments for proposed marijuana co-located facility parcel ID number zero-five-two-nine-nine-zero-zero-two-four-seven-zero-four Quality Roots. Marijuana selection committee recommends approval subject to the conditions contained in the Planning Department memo. I'm sorry, that's incorrect.
Yes.
I apologize for being out of order here, but, so the approval did not go through, but again, there was that, there was a competing resolution, if you want to call it that in there, that would set forth the reasoning for the potential denial. And so if the council wants to take that issue up, I think it'd be appropriate to do so before moving to the next business item.
It was denied, so what are we taking up, turning the script over exactly?
Well, it wasn't actually denied, it just failed to receive an approving vote, so the council would still be able to.
Deny?
Yeah, the council would still be able to make that motion based on the resolution that's in the packet. It's a pre-prepared resolution within the packet. No, no, it doesn't need to be changed. It's already been, the motion that was on the floor has already been voted on. I'm just saying that the formal action to deny could also be taken at this time. Well, the site plan approval and the special land use approval require an affirmative vote to move forward, so if the council chooses not to adopt a specific denying resolution, then it could do that, and the item would simply just fail for lack of support at that point.
Is there a motion to deny?
If I understand it, I can make a motion to deny, to deny the resolution, what am I, deny the license.
Yeah, so, well, it's not the license, actually the site plan and special land use, and there were multiple different resolutions in the packet, and so one was an approving and one was denying, and both of those are available for council's use.
So by not having substantial support, you still have to have a motion to?
Well, it wouldn't be required. I'm just saying that it's an option that council has to set forth, reasoning for which to deny.
Council President?
Yes.
May I make a motion to enter a closed study session with the attorney if we get clarification?
So the question I had, is there a motion to deny? The motion to deny is on the site plan approval that has come before us.
But we don't have to use it.
We don't have to use it.
I'll make a motion to deny, Council President.
Okay. Is there support for the motion to deny?
Support.
There's support for the motion to deny. The motion is made by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion? Okay. There's a motion to deny, roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Radkowski.
Yes.
Pro temp Sampe.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes. Number nine?
This would be?
Number, new business item number nine.
It would be at number nine.
Approval of license amendment and adoption of corresponding resolution approving amendments for proposed marijuana co-located facility parcel ID zero-five-two-nine-nine-zero-zero-two-four-seven-zero-one Quality Roots.
Motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny?
Support.
By Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Roll call.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Radkowski.
Yes.
Pro temp Sampe.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes. Moving to new business item number ten. Approval of special land use and site plan modification for proposed marijuana co-located facility parcel ID number zero-five-two-nine-nine-zero-zero-two-three-seven-zero-seven west of Newburgh on the north side of Cherry Hill, LJA Holdings, planning division number one-eight-eight-fourC. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations and with the conditions stated in the Planning Department cover memo.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there support? I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Council President. This is similar to the previous request. The petitioner for LJA is seeking to modify the previously-approved site plan and special land use approval for the construction of a marijuana co-located facility. At the time, it included all three, retail cultivation and processing. This modification being proposed is to remove the grow cultivation element out of the operation, again, resulting in, well, it'll still result in one building for the retail operation. It'll bring the processing operation into that same six-thousand-square-foot building, and the two large buildings, one of which was supposed to incorporate cultivation and one processing, will be eliminated from the marijuana operation. There will still be a phase development. Phase one will be the retailer processing I just mentioned in the gray portion of this site plan on your screen. And in the rear, there will be a pad, concrete pad built for a future industrial development. The petitioner slash property owner will market the property for an industrial development. Once a operator, business owner is located, they will build the building on the pad to fit the industrial business owner's needs. They are also sizing the detention pond at the rear of phase two to be designed and adequate enough to accommodate the stormwater runoff for both phase one and phase two, and that detention basin will be constructed as part of phase one. The 2018 master plan, future land use designation for this site is industrial. To the north, you have R-five single-family development. It's separated by several hundred feet with some untouched wooded area and wetland areas over here, so the R-five district will be protected and buffered. Property to the south, across the street from Cherry Hill, I-two vacant, previously-approved was a conditional marijuana co-located business that decided to walk away at the old junkyard site. Properties to, property to the east is I-one, Hush Haunted Attraction, as you know. Property to the west is the co-located marijuana business you just denied. The site will continue to be accessed, similar to the previous site, previously-approved site plan, by two full-service driveways at Cherry Hill on opposite ends of the property's frontage. This site will also comply with the parking requirements for both the retail and processing operation. Landscaping is the same as previously proposed, again, in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The building, let me see if I have a rendering of it. The building will be constructed with metal, stone, I'm sorry, stone metal paneling, wood siding, and glass panels. All of the bulk requirements, including height, setbacks, and lot coverage, will be complied with as well. The Administration, Planning Commission, and Planning Commission are recommending approval, subject to the same conditions I read on the record as the previous case, which are standard conditions for all of the marijuana businesses that come before you and have been previously approved. I know the authorized agent, Paul, is in the audience, and I'm happy to answer any questions from my staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Weisberger, on behalf of the applicant. Again, some of you, like Councilmember Hart, have heard me speak a number of times. Some of you are new, so I wanted to give you a little history. We obviously know that the marijuana market is extremely cutthroat. Growing of marijuana has dropped since we first applied from four thousand to five thousand dollars a pound to anywhere from five hundred, eight hundred dollars a pound. What we have done since we were in last study session, as we have invested more money into the project, we had about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand into this in engineering soft costs, not counting land. We went ahead because we have a vat issue, where you can't clear trees during essentially the summer months because of a protected vat. We didn't want to lose out on the opportunity, should we be approved tonight, to be able to get construction going. So we've taken the calculated risk of expending between bonds and perme fees, about a hundred thousand dollars in excavation costs, I'm sorry, tree clearing costs, to remove the trees. The trees that are removed are essentially everything that you don't see in the dark green wooded shaded area, but it also includes the detention area. We've also had Jennifer Roth, who's with me from Ahwell, go ahead and put in considerable effort to revise all the engineering plans and submit them to both the city engineer and the county. We have since gotten back from the county comments, and our stormwater management has been approved, our right-of-way has been approved, our traffic control has a few comments, and we have some work to do with the Drain Commission and Eagle for tapping into the water. We're fully committed to this project, and we want to see this through to the end. We've got hundreds of thousands of dollars in it. If we were to be denied, we're not speeding up the creation of a new cannabis facility in the community because you have to start all over with somebody else that has to go through, if it's a new development like this, months and months and months and months and months with the county and Eagle, if they have wetlands. We have a unique site that renders the vast majority of it unusable because of the wetlands, so we've tried to maximize every square inch that we can so we can have a return on investment. And that's what you see in front of you, is a detention basin with a phase one and a phase two. The phase two, we're putting in storm catch basins, they go and loop all the way around the east, west, and north and come back. We're bringing water to the southern edge of the second-phase pad. We're bringing sanitary sewer to the southern edge of the pad. It is our intent, and we're not doing this just to bamboozle you, we're doing this because we need a return on our investment. This is a very costly project in light of the limited amount of real estate that we can use, and we do intend and must get an industrial tenant to go in there. We feel like there's a market for it. Industrial market is been fairly strong. We're confident that it'll stay strong, but we have not gone out and marketed yet until we have some direction on whether or not this project's moving forward. We respectfully request that we get approved tonight so we can then engage our broker to go out there and try and locate a tenant so we can actually build phase two. We want to build phase two, so we have the return. people, seven of them, that tied with 92 points. And many of those other applicants, and Mo can speak to this if asked or needed, were much smaller in scale than the project we proposed. We stand before you not to propose a smaller project. We are proposing to build a 6,000-square-foot retail and processing building instead of five, and we're proposing to build a 25,000-square-foot industrial building when we find a tenant. Now, if we have to build two buildings because we have two different tenants and they only need 11,000 or 12, we will have to come back before you for revised site plan. But that is the intent is to utilize that full pad. And with that said, I respectfully request that we be approved tonight as well as the next item. And if there's any questions on the next agenda item, I, if invited, would be happy to speak.
Okay. Is there any question from the maker? Councilman?
So if this was approved tonight, you said phase one, and then you have phase two. There's going to be a big gap between phase one and phase two. Is that land going to be partially developed, parking lot, or it's just going to be dirt and detention?
Jennifer, maybe you can speak to it, but I, we would have to do, you know, some obviously excavation to put in the storm, and we are putting in catch basins, and we would have to have soil erosion control measures in place. If we felt or if the staff or city felt like there was going to be a gap, and there will be a gap between getting approval and then marketing it and then getting approved, and then that person telling us their size dimensions, getting those construction drawings done, submitting them, getting them approved. There will not be all the county permitting because all the storm is already taken care of, all the right-of-way work is already taken care of. So those, all the Eagle permits would be taken care of. This would be more of a simple design permit and build. This is a whole different ballgame, phase one. So if we had to put, if we had to seed it, if we had to put in vegetation for the temporary period, we would do so.
And time for phase one?
Phase one, we probably are six to eight months away from my discussions with Jennifer on having everything done under the sun, including billing permits as well as county permits and Eagle permits, which would leave, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that would leave about 10 to 12 months if an extension was granted to complete a project of this size.
And when would you start advertising phase two?
Immediately upon approval. Immediately upon approval.
Well, I would support this. I would like, you know, this, this long road to come to an end, and we get some, some real movement. I've seen trees cut down already. I see some investment into the city, but I'd like this to come to full fruition, and I ask that the rest of the council, even with the heartburn, to try to move past that and approve this. So I will be supporting this.
Is there any additional discussion from the council? Councilman Hart?
Why is it, you looked at me when you said heartburn, was it?
Heartburn.
It's a pun. Yeah. Well, you know, all of my comments, you know, for the other item kind of hold true here. You know, it was, again, a very competitive process. There were winners and losers. And when the industry changed, rather than let these licenses expire, and what I wanted to do was put these all back on the street and everybody bid with the new, kind of the new industry standard, these, these couple folks went to, you know, to length and went to court and locked out our licenses so that we couldn't cancel them and then we couldn't put them back on the street. So not only were we unable to move forward with the new industry, they tied our hands, and then they come in here and they cried, you know, that it wasn't fair. Well, you, like I said, you, you kind of put yourself in this position too. You know, that's my opinion and that's my perspective. So I still have the same issues, but I can be reasonable. What I'm not really sold on yet is the phase two pad. It sounds like another promise, kind of a, look, if you do this, we'll do this. Sounds like quid pro quo. And I remember, you know, fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. I was fooled a couple times, especially on, again, 6 September 2022, if anybody wants to watch that council meeting, I encourage you to do it. Start at about 26 minutes. Promises were made, and then they were immediately, no, we're not going to do that. So if you tell me we're going to build this building, I just don't have any assurances that you're going to do it. I have a trust issue. And I represent, you know, as we all do here, I represent 85,000 residents of the City of Westland. You lie to me, you lie to all 85,000. Okay? It's my job to protect them from people lying to them. All right? It just, it is everybody else. And then try to be an objective and fair and reasonable. And I go back to, again, the principle of, this is what you said you're going to do, you won based off what you said you're going to do, and then not only did you try to change that, you prevented us from putting it back on the street and letting you rebid your own project smaller because you didn't want the competition of other people bidding this, again, putting it back on the street. So without assurances, something other than a handshake and a promise, that phase two will be constructed and a C of O won't be issued until all of it's built, in good faith and confidence, I just can't do it. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Is there any additional discussion? I do have discussion. You know, my comments are similar to what I said last time as well. I think that it'd be nice to move forward, to have the revenue to come in for this community, especially when we're in a situation where we know in a couple of years we're going to be facing a revenue shortfall. And we need, I think, all of the taxable revenue we can get. I want to tread lightly when I say this. There have been other petitioners who've come and before the council and asked for site plan modifications and have been granted. I understand this is a licensing process. It's a little different versus your standard site plan and petition that comes out, but nonetheless, changes have been made. And sometimes in situations where we didn't always want the petitioner there, we have one project in particular, which I will not get into because I do not want to get myself in trouble, but there was one in particular that we knew we had to ultimately approve. At the end of the day, with their modification, that, that we weren't, I think anyone in council at the time was sold on. We have an opportunity to get revenue, and we, I think sorely need it in our budget. We have an opportunity to put into our community development fund, into our tree fund, and we have an opportunity to have a really nice-looking site at this location. And, you know, I think passing up on that is just something I, you know, I don't agree with. I understand the heartburn and the consternation about having to go through this for a third or fourth time with these petitioners. I understand being angry at them, but we have, at some point, either we're going to be told to move on with the court system, and it's just going to happen anyway, or we're going to start this process all over again at some point in time, and who knows, a year, a year and a half, two years from now with different petitioners. We may be, you know, sitting here trying to approve a site plan, and we're spending that entire time missing out on, on revenue that I think we could use, you know, fiscally for our budget. So I will be in support of this, but I recognize that not everybody will.
Thank you, Council. Did you have something?
I did, just if I, if I may interject briefly. I just want to make basically the same comment I made before, that there's the two resolutions in the packet. Obviously, the one that's up right now is the approving, and there's also denying that I would encourage the council to take a look at, should it become relevant? You know, and obviously, those are documents that are, it will be modified by the council, but they're there for your use. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I mean, again, I definitely want the development, okay? Let's not go ahead and misunderstand that at all. And yes, there's been people that have modified their site plans before, but it wasn't like we said, just throw an example out there, look, we're only going to allow four more McDonald's in here, and if you, you know, you're going to have to apply for it, and you're going to bid for it, and if you win, you're going to have to do what you want. These were individual one-offs where people did modify their site plan, and there was no competitive landscape that went to the, that contributed to the fact that they got that spot in the first place and they got their conditional licenses anyway. This is different. This is, was a competitive process. I can't say that enough times. This makes it unique, okay? Competitive process. We're sitting here, not because we've delayed this, we're sitting here because the industry has delayed this. We're sitting here because the industry has played, quite frankly, their best game to protect their interest. Okay? They're protecting their interests, not yours. They're protecting their interests, okay? And without, with this one in particular, I can be reasonable, okay? But I can't accept a promise. You guys lost that with me, okay? So you have to put it out, put your neck out there, and you're, for me, and you're going to have to guarantee. And a guarantee is not a phased site plan. A guarantee is a full site plan. And I'm just going to stay with that. And with regards to the loss of revenue, revenue shortfall, I think that's a little jilted. But in case it's not, I'm not willing to sell my ethics and integrity, okay? I'm going to do what's right. And I know the difference between right and wrong, and competitive landscape here says that you should do what you said you're going to do. If you're not going to do what you said you're going to do, then release us and let us put these back on the street and try again. And they've prevented that. So there's no sympathy with me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Wow, that was, that was pretty much everything I was going to say. You know, Paul, you've been up here a few times. We beat you up, and I know you've worked hard for your client. You've been in front of us, you've asked for the extensions. I've been through the process and such. But my biggest concern also is there's no timeline, there's no guarantee. I mean, this is, as Councilman said, we could be reasonable, but there's no timeline, there's no guarantee. It's just basically saying it's a phased approach, and, you know, if we get to it, we, we get to it. So the heartburn is, as, you know, a representative of the city, is we have trees that were cut down. Frankly, I'm a little bit concerned that there was a lot of trees removed, there's no communication to council, and we didn't even know what was going on. We had no indication on timeline, and that's, that's kind of troubling as well, too. So looking at, you know, what we have presented in front of us with no timeline, not having an approach, it's hard to gauge when it's always been dictated on, well, that's the industry. Well, that's the industry. Do we need the investment? Absolutely. Absolutely, we do. But at the same time, there's no timeline, so I'm, I'm struggling to kind of really support this or stand behind it when there's no timeline on a phased approach. I know you want to make good on your quote-unquote "promise," but yeah, ethically, it's, it's hard to stand behind something that it's been delayed and delayed and delayed. So it's not that we're trying to block anything, and, you know, I don't, I don't know where that budget shortfall came from, but we're, you know, we're trying to be good partners, and we're trying to support our city as well, too, but it is very hard to get behind something that there's been a delay and we've been locked in. It was like, almost like a toddler, I'm sorry to say this, but a toddler like stamping their feet and saying, fine, we'll just sue you. And I don't take well as, as someone just saying, well, they're going to sue us, and it's not good partners. So I'm really struggling with this, I really am.
I'd say we would agree that the motion, the resolution to approve has a six-month window to X, 12 months, and if not done in 12, you have to post a performance bond. So there, there are teeth in that motion to approve. And there is a dismissal of all claims, an agreement to all fees. It's all, everything's done.
Attorney?
Sorry, I just wanted to mention what Paul's referring to is the proposed motion to approve. I think it's actually on the next agenda item for the license amendment, though, not for the site planning, but it ties together, but there is a 12-month timeline along with a six-month extension in exchange for posting a surety bond guaranteeing completion of construction.
Yep. Just for clarification, if, and Mo in the city attorney, I think I know the answer, but I just want to put it out there. So if this gets denied today, but if they come back next week and say, just saying, at the next council meeting, all right, we're going to build phase one, phase two, that could be put back on the agenda and that could be considered by council, is that correct?
That's, that project has already been approved, so they can build that project, if you like, unless anything with the pending litigation says otherwise.
Yeah, the original site.
So I think what Mo's referring to is the fact that the original site plan is still in effect. So although they've indicated that it would be economically not feasible to do so, they would have the legal ability to build according to their originally approved site plan.
Thank you. Motion to deny, Council President.
There is a motion to deny. Is there support?
So I think, I'm sorry, I apologize. Was there already a motion to approve on the table?
There was. Okay. There's a motion to deny. There is support. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes. New business, item number 11, approval of license amendment and adoption of corresponding resolution approving amendments for proposed marijuana co-located facility parcel ID number LJA Holdings Marijuana Selection Committee recommends approval subject to the conditions contained in the Planning Commission communication memo.
Council President, motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny. Is there support?
So I think, I'm sorry, I apologize. Was there already a motion to approve on the table?
There was. Okay. There's a motion to deny. There is support. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes. New business, item number 11, approval of license amendment and adoption of corresponding resolution approving amendments for proposed marijuana co-located facility parcel ID number LJA Holdings Marijuana Selection Committee recommends approval subject to the conditions contained in the Planning Commission communication memo.
Council President, motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny. Is there support?
Yes.
Supported by Councilman Wishart. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, on the administration, city staff, other speakers or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped. Once it is started, the clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking. Public comment, is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juanita Francis, and I am a longtime resident in the City of Westland, 25 years to be exact. One of the reasons why me and my family, our young family at that time, came to Westland was because of the school district, the family activities and the engagement with everyone. It was a home for us. But throughout the years, as you know, we have seen our city take many different faces, up and down with activities, involvement, things for our families to do. And I know some of that is primarily because And I know some of that is primarily because of what we just passed with our international epidemic. But let me pause for a moment and just give you a brief background of who I am. I am the Director of the JFL Dance Project, and we have danced many events here in the city of Westland. Our daughter, Ashay, has opened up many times with the state of the city of dress. I was, on many occasions, the mistress of ceremonies for the Martin Luther King event. Our daughter, Trinity, is now working at Nickelodeon. She has drawn many, many times and won first place for the library contest. So we were very involved. I have had many community events with hundreds and hundreds of families. So I have been actively involved here. But here recently, I have noticed a huge improvement with family activities and community events. Our children are grown now. But I am there at these family events with the children, with the families, because this is something that I am proud to say. I am so happy to see this positive change. I want to personally thank Pascal Azay, the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, for the different events that we've been having. I want to thank the city of Westland administrators for everything, the fire department, the police department, Parks and Recs. I am so happy to say again that I am a resident of the city of Westland. Now, one of the things that I am concerned about is our young people that are away in college. When they come home from school, like, all these marijuana things I'm seeing everywhere, that's fine. I don't smoke, I don't do drugs and things like that. But what I don't see is, like, when we had our recreation center, I don't see something for our youth that is coming back. What about those babies that are from 18 to, let's say, 30? Can we get something for them to do? Just strictly for them, not anyone else, exclusively for those babies coming home. We need to be focusing more on family involvement, on family connectivity. Although my children are grown now, but y'all need to think about, our babies out here suffering. I'm a guest teacher in the school district, and I see firsthand.
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. I sit down now?
Yes, yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak, public comment? Anyone else on my left wishing to speak, public comment? Anyone else in the audience? All right, hearing and seeing none, we will close public comment. And we will move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, residents. Thank you, everybody in the audience and staff that's here today. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kari Beeb on her reappointment to the Board of Review, and also Daniel Murphy on his reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We thank you both as a city for your service. I know serving on these boards and commissions takes up your personal time. You're, you know, you're getting paid a little bit, but you're basically donating your time and your effort to the city, so we do appreciate your service and everything that all of our boards and commissioners do. We appreciate you. Today marks the beginning of a heck of a heat wave that we've noticed today, and it's expected to last all week with even higher temperatures in the following days. On that note, I've ordered several cooling centers opened across the city. Briefly, I'll go through them. There's, there's a handful of them. City Hall, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thursday and Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Fost Public Library on Central City Parkway, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Westland Friendship Center on Newburgh, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Fire Station One on Central City Parkway, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. throughout the week. And then, of course, the Westland Police Station is 24/7. And during this heat wave, of course, just be safe out there. Sometimes you don't notice how fast the heat can catch up with you, and the sun is quite a factor as well. So please stay hydrated, check on your neighbors, especially the elderly or, or people who might have health issues. And of course, be mindful of leaving your pets outside for too long during this heat. It can really have an effect. We've had several great events over the last two weeks in the city of Westland. Our Garden City Westland Senior Expo here at City Hall had a great turnout. I was able to stop in for a while. A lot of great resources for seniors and information. Miriam was here earlier for Relay for Life, very proud of all the efforts that they surpassed their goal of raising over $50,000 for cancer research. The Westland Police and Inkster Police Department partnered last week at the Jeseminy Missionary Baptist Church and Christ Temple Apostolic Faith Church for their Faith Blue in Summer Two, which was a great community event in the southeast portion of our city. I was able to stop by there as well. I want to thank our Westland Police Department Chief Dolly and all the police officers that participated. They were working the grill, they were hanging out with the families. It was really nice to see that. So I do appreciate them, them doing that. Don Nicholson Enterprises held their annual Wayne Road Cruise. I had my listening tour that's continuing throughout the city. It was at Stottlemyre Park, also in the southeast end of our city. We had beautiful weather that was on Monday last week, and I want to thank all the residents that participated and came out. A lot of great feedback. We always take notes. We go through with each department head throughout the feedback so that we can figure out how to address those issues. But I know my team's already working quite a bit on addressing the issues that came up at the listing tour. We had beautiful weather for our movie night in Westland, and then that was last Wednesday. And then on Thursday, the farmer's market had their Pet Palooza. So I want to thank all the city staff that participated and helped out with those events. Actually, opening my phone up right now because I realize there's something that's not on this list, which is the next listening tour stop. I want people to be able to plan ahead, though, that's why I want to announce this tonight. It's going to be Monday, July 16th, 5:30 p.m. at Carrato Park, which, which is in the north end of our city. So that's why we moved this around so that everybody has access to these events. Again, the next mayor's listening tour, Monday, July 16th, 5:30 at, 5:30 p.m. at Carrato Park. So we're looking forward to that. And also, just want to congratulate two of our newest businesses that we had ribbon cuttings for, which was VIP Auto Repair and AAA Insurance Mary Agency. So thank you, everybody, and that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, we will begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilwoman Baumann.
Thank you. I actually, I don't have too much. I just, I do want to make one reference to, there was a comment made about the budget of the shortfall, and I don't know, I just don't know the shortfall change, because I know we took the revenue that we would have been realizing from, the estimated revenue from marijuana business, we took it out of the budget when we passed the 2025 budget. So I just thought that was, I want to clarify that, people, but I just, there is a lot going on in the city of Westland, and I appreciate being, you know, that that's been recognized as well. I just want to encourage people to participate in those things as well. So there is so much going on this summer, it's a little wobbly, but I hope to see y'all there.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear from Councilwoman Hart.
Not a whole lot for me today. Thank you very much. Everybody enjoy your Fourth of July holiday, but I know that's coming up after our next meeting. But enjoy it anyway, coming up. Thank you.
Council President.
Yes. Not generally, no, we don't. No, we let the administration jump in. Sorry, it's council comment time.
Irreliously.
Oh.
I will ask on his behalf.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Sorry to go out of order there. I announced that mayor's listening tour, I said, I misspoke, I said Monday, the 16th. It's actually Tuesday, the 16th. So Tuesday, the 16th, 5:30 p.m. Thanks for letting me correct that, I appreciate it.
15th is a council day.
Yeah, good catch, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now hear from Councilwoman Hornbuckle.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman, for leaving us in the public. I wanted to say that one. I want to, you know, all the great businesses going on in Westland, but I want to recognize a couple of smaller, community-driven neighborhoods that had, that did a block, beat and eat. Sherry and Rachel over at North Bubble Street, this is their second annual, and I had, was lucky enough to go by and see the community itself supporting each other, having a good time, enjoying life as, as a community. So that was really great to go by, and I just want to recognize that community for doing an awesome job. Relay for Life, man, how can you not be excited for them being able to raise so much money so quickly? And so all the people that donated and supported, that's, that's a really great testament to the community for working together to fund something this very important in our lives. Also, Wednesday, Juneteenth, I want to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth. Very important in our nation that we remember this day, as it's very important in our culture as we want to be together. We need to learn about each other's history and embrace each other. So happy Juneteenth, everyone. It already stated it's hot outside, so make sure you stay hydrated, stay cool, and if you need me, you can reach out to me on my Facebook page, Councilwoman Duana Hornbuckle, or you can text or call me at 742242747. Thank you, and I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmen. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to wish all of the fathers a belated Happy Father's Day, or those who are father figures in someone's life. We appreciate you and your hard work. As far as this evening, I think we had some very lively debate and discussion, and I think that's important. I'm going to hold my personal feelings on a few of the things to myself, because that's my prerogative. However, I wanted to say that, you know, a couple meetings ago, I believe it was one meeting ago, we talked about, or maybe two, about our boards and commissions. And, you know, we've received some more information, and today we've placed people on boards and commissions. But it's important, as we have a wonderful legal team behind us, and we have a lot of people who want to participate in boards and commissions and be active in this vibrant, wonderful community that we call home, and want to render service to all of us, that those boards and commissions are functioning the way that they should be, and also that their bylaws for individual boards are also within the scope of the law. So I, I would hope that as we are moving forward and we're filling all of these positions, that we can call upon the administration, as well as our legal team, to start reviewing these bylaws, policies, and procedures to make sure that they are within their scope. There have been instances when people have been prevented from serving on multiple boards or, well, there's not an "or," from multiple boards due to certain bylaws from individual boards, and, and that is just categorically incorrect and outside of, outside of legislation. And that legislation goes beyond our municipal legislation, and it's state and federal legislation. So I would just hope that people continue to have an interest in, in being of service to their community. We are stronger when we work together. Service is the, to your community is the best work of life, and let's make sure that we create a way for everybody to be able to be part of that. And with that, bringing in their policies and procedures, something similar to ours, where people aren't mistreated for having different views as well. With that, I'm going to just wish you a good evening, a nice two weeks, and we will see you, gosh, in July.
July.
July, okay. Good evening, folks.
All right, we will now hear from Councilwoman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to give everyone a quick reminder, June is Men Health, Health, Mental Health Month. Not many people know that the second most cause of death for men under 45 is actually suicide. Please reach out to the men in your life, have a conversation with them. I know a lot of men suffer in silence. They know, they can, they need to know that there's help available, and we can actually help them out. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Pro Tem.
One thing that I hate is being later in the list, because pretty much everything what everyone says, it's like, I know it is by design, because they're saying, "Ah, she's going to talk forever." But there are a few things I just wanted to point out. So myself and Council President will be participating tomorrow in a lunchtime conversation on common grounds in honor of Pride Month. It's a very worthy event that's going to take place here at City Hall. I believe that we'll be here probably around 11:00.
11:30.
It starts at 11:30, I think lunch starts at 11:15. So it is free, welcome to attend, anyone that wishes to attend, you know, everyone's welcome. And I did also want to wish the community a happy Juneteenth, so my colleague beat me to that. I also wanted to wish my father and the colleagues that do have children a happy belated Father's Day. I'm so lucky, my dad follows me in life and, you know, in job, usually where I go, so I'm very appreciative. I wanted to give the Westland Police Department, just to plug, their youth academy is running July 15th through July 19th. Is that correct, chief? Okay, perfect. It's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's going to be week-long, and applications are due June 24th. You can go to the Westland Police Department to pick up that application. Hopefully, that's correct. It's funny, my son told me as I'm driving the other day, he's like, "I think I want to be in the FBI." I'm like, "Well, you have to be a police officer first." He's like, "I don't know if I'm going to do that." So, but I thought it was cute, you know? He's 17, and he's already thinking about his career, so it, it sounds like it's going to be a great opportunity, hands-on activities and experiences, so I'm really glad that our police department does this. Also, I would encourage you to check out the farmer's market. I think it was last meeting, I had this really cute vest on, and I got it at the farmer's market. So they're starting to kind of have different vendors there as well, in addition to food, and it, it's a great time, from 3:00 to 7:00 over at Central City. So if you have the opportunity to check it out, I do encourage you to do so. Wanted to also plug the Luminary. I know it's been mentioned, but Miriam and the team for Relay for Life do an amazing job. So I was there for the opening, and I came back later, pretty much right when the, the rain was about to start. So just another plug, the ceremony, the 24th of June, it's going to start at 8:00, and it looks like the ceremony will be at 9:00. So that's a fantastic way for you to honor your loved ones and, and those survivors as well, too. One thing on the agenda that maybe got overlooked because it was baked in that consent calendar is the permit-free garage sale weekend is coming up. I had a lot of residents reach out to me saying, "Hey, when is that garage sale?" So July 12th through the 14th is the free garage sale, permit-free weekend. So hopefully, if you have anything you need to sell, you can, you can take access of that and have your own garage sale. So one thing that I mentioned here, this is going to be, I guess, maybe a longer, a longer comment, is that I was very nervous, not nervous, I was very concerned with passing the budget last time, last meeting, because I wanted to make a motion to postpone and promise we would do the budget amendments. So my ask is that we need to get a study session together. On June 10th, Council President sent out a note asking for an update. I sent out a note on the 14th, and we still have nothing. So my concern is that we're trying to figure out where this 318,000 is coming from, and we still have nothing. So my concern is that, just like the concern to postpone the budget, is like, we're still in limbo. So I guess, you know, I, I'm going to get with my colleagues, and we're going to have to call a meeting together to kind of get things sorted out, because disappointed, I don't know if the emails are ignored, or they're stalling, I have no idea, but we really, 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 really need to get this together. I'm looking at Council President, so perhaps I can get three colleagues together, and we'll get something together for a meeting, perhaps, but I'm a little bit concerned, because I know that people are going to say, "I want vacations." So want to get something together. It's really, really, really important for a lot of my colleagues that have expressed concerns. One of the things that was also on the agenda, it was polled, is that Mr. Higgins was on the library board. So we are looking for somebody for that place. So I got an email from Mr. Swokis, and he has expressed his interest in the library board. He sent it to the mayor. So I'm hoping that we can, we can have a discussion on this, because I think that we need a replacement. I don't know, his term, it actually expired, I think on the 24th, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know if we can be without a library board president, but I think it's really important that we put someone in place. I had heard that there's a lot of women on, on the board, so hoping that we can get someone in there, in that spot. in there, in that spot. And I know Mr. Swokis would be a great addition and a member of the diversity community, too. So that's, that's all I had. I was kind of going through the agenda, looking at my notes and such, too. So we will see you on the 1st. That is right before the holiday. Hopefully, you can come and join us. I don't know if people are taking a long holiday or not, but Monday, July 1st at 7:00. If you need to reach me, you can find me on my personal council page, Melissa Sampe. Until then, be safe and kind with each other. We'll see you soon.
All right, thank you, Protam. I've got quite a few things here tonight, so bear with me. When do I not? Number one, if anybody ever feels intimidated, harassed, threatened, bullied, up here on a border commission, in the Administration, we are and should be a city free of that, as every community should be. But it is our job as elected officials to lead by example, and it is the job of folks who serve on board and commission members. While you're not elected officials, you are appointed officials. And it is our job collectively to lead by example. So whether it is someone up here who feels that way, someone on a border commission, a resident, anyone, anywhere, please let us know, and it isn't acceptable. It's not acceptable, and people deserve to be heard. Even if we don't, there's lots of ideas and things that come up that I don't agree with, and sometimes I internally get upset, and I want to flip the pen in the air and be, you know, a little annoyed with it. But we've all got to be here on our best behavior, professional and ready to work. I will never tell anyone that they have to like someone in particular, but for the 84,000 people that we serve, I think we can be professional and get along. And that should be a baseline minimum standard that I would hope we can all collectively meet. So that goes for any of us, boards and commission members, anyone. Couple of other things. DTE, we have tried on a couple of occasions to plan a public meeting with DTE, myself and my colleague. It has gone nowhere. We have been stuck in neutral, trying to get a response from the folks at DTE. Couple of years ago, there was a public town hall. We the People Michigan came up, Congresswoman Toleeb came up, Michigan Environmental Justice Coalition came up. DTE was conspicuously absent, and we would like a public meeting, a public town hall with DTE, just to get some answers on what are you doing to upgrade the grid, to make it more reliable, to, so help people understand why they have frequent and constant power outages here in Westland. We have a lot of above-ground wires, we have a lot of trees here in the community. We already know some of the answers, but it'd be nice to hear it right from DTE themselves and get an explanation as far as what they're doing and when they're, when they're doing it. So it'd be great if DTE could respond to our inquiries to try and plan a public meeting. My colleague already mentioned the Pride event that's going to be happening here tomorrow at City Hall, 11:15 for the start of the luncheon, and then 11:30 for the start of the conversation and the panel. I want to thank the Mayor's Office and the Administration for putting that on, for Derek Davis, who's going to be our moderator, for Pascal Azay, Director Azay, who is helped to plan that event, and Nicole as well, for helping to plan that event. Thank you, and congratulations to Carrie Beeb and Daniel Murphy on your reappointments and for your willingness to serve here in the community again. As was already mentioned, lots of great events that have been going on over the last couple of weeks, the Relay for Life, the Faith Blue and Summer Two event, the Pet Palooza, the movie night. I had the chance to go out there and attend all of them. Thank you to all the city staff, the DPS, our park rangers, our Westland Police Department, Westland Fire Department, who've been out at each of these events, planning these events. I know the PD put on, helped to put on and sponsor this first-of-its-kind Faith Blue and Summer Two event, which is a great way to build bond between law enforcement and residents in the community, and a great way to really humanize, you know, law enforcement and give our residents the opportunity to know them, not just as police officers, but as human beings and individuals who wear that badge and come to work each and every day to, to work for them. It is coming up tomorrow, Juneteenth, which is also Emancipation Day. In 1865, General Gordon Granger of the Union Army went to notify the last of the slaves in Texas that they were free, and that emancipation had been finally, after a long struggle, granted to them. So that is, you know, really why we celebrate Emancipation Day, Juneteenth. It is to honor and remember solemnly the struggle and the horrific nature that so many Black and Brown individuals endured in bondage and slavery in this country, and so that we do not forget, and that we, we remember their struggle and their sacrifice, and we move forward and strive to do better in the future. With regards to my comment about the budget shortfall, it is in the budget if you look in future projected years, in the 26, 27, 27, 28, and 29, 20 years, we are dipping into use of fund balance, so that was what my comment was related to. We have, you know, an opportunity, well, I guess past tense, had an opportunity, and I will respect the, you know, the wish of my colleague, of my colleagues. I am one of seven people up here, and ultimately, however they choose to vote, and however I choose to vote, is how it is, and I will respect that wish, and we will move forward from here. But with regards to my comment about the budget shortfall, if you look in future, you know, years, it is projected use of fund balance. That's been the case in a lot of previous budgets that have been adopted as well, and then adjustments are made, so I don't want to set off alarm bells or, you know, panic anyone. But knowing that we have a couple of, you know, significant collective bargaining agreements that, that we passed, we want to make sure that we're on our best footing, you know, financially with that, and I just, you know, ultimately felt the way I felt with regards to the marijuana votes tonight, and so that was what my comment was in regard to. I agree with the commission bylaws. I think, you know, it seems like some commissions have bylaws, some don't. Getting clarity on each of those bylaws, which commissions, board and commissions have them, and how those hold up to state of Michigan legal statutes, I think is going to be needed. So I'll definitely be following up on that, as well as the study session that my colleague mentioned regarding the budget amendments. And then, now that we're, you know, moving forward into the new budget season, there's a number of initiatives that I would like to, you know, see us work on, one of which I think collectively we all agree on, which is the remaining balance for the American Rescue Plan funds, for your ARPA funds. We had a meeting of the Subcommittee between myself, my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, and my colleague, Councilman Hornbuckle. We're going to hopefully get a study session scheduled soon to discuss our ARPA ideas. I would encourage all of my colleagues and members of the public to bring their ideas as far as what we want to do with that ARPA money. We have a pretty good framework that we discussed at the Subcommittee meeting based on prior submissions from the City Council. I know we have two new members who are not on the council then, so I would encourage them to bring some ideas forward here to the table as well. I have had the opportunity to talk with Congresswoman Toleeb and someone from her office as well. I'm working on having a conversation with the Director of Public Health for the City of Dearborn regarding a public health department and any potential funding for that. Can't make any promises about this. I'm just one of seven people, plus the Administration. It's something I would like to see us do. I think that investing in public health here in the City of Westland is going to be and should be an important goal of ours. I know that Wayne County has its own department, but when you're a county of several million people, I think we can get a more localized, focused approach with a City of Westland Public Health Department to focus on the public health, wellness, and fitness of our residents here in the community. So I've, you know, just kind of had on my own conversations about, with folks about what it would look like, funding mechanisms, because I know it's a big undertaking and probably a very expensive proposition as well. And so I'd love to see us do that. There are also a couple of ordinances that I've had the opportunity to work on. I've worked with folks in other communities on these ordinances, Councilman Mikel Goodman from Pontiac, as well as I worked with Lisa Chapman from the Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness. One's called a Source of Income Ordinance, one is called a Fair Chance Access to Housing Ordinance. I'm not going to get into the weeds of those things. I will be sending those ordinances over to my colleagues on council. I've had the chance to share them with the Administration as well, so just some stuff for the future that I'd really love to work on. And with that, I think that is all I've got in my 10-minute spiel here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
All right.
For those of you...